...agreement with Tempco Electric Heater Corporation for the property at 6 N 504. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski? Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods? Mayor Felice.
I declare a quorum present. The city and Tempco are still discussing the property, so the public hearing will be continued. Do we have a motion to continue the public hearing until May 19, 2016, at 7:30 PM?
I'll make the motion.
I'll sack that.
Who was that?
Tony?
Thank you.
I think Randy made the second.
No.
Sonny.
Sonny?
Sonny. May 19th, correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I declare the public hearing closed. Next, call the city council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski? Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
I declare a quorum present. Please stand and join in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, do any citizens wish to be heard on matters? Oh, wait. Excuse me. City council minutes. I need their motion to approve February 4, 2016.
Make their motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The council minutes. That passes. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? No written communiques. Under mayor's report, you all received a letter from the Historical Society, donation request. Motion, comment? The Historical Society, donation request. I believe it was 5,000. I'm looking for the letter. I'm sorry. I'm one-handed here. I'm a little...
I make the motion for 5,000.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sorrentino?
Is this the usual donation that occurs on an annual basis?
No, there's a... The annual donation is the 6,500. That takes care of all their activities, events, and whatnot. The additional 5,000 originally was for the painting of the barn. And then we also have the gala committee. We started the charity gala to help take care of some of these things. But this request was for the windows, correct? Right. Mr. Murmish.
That's correct. Also, just a bit of history. Up until fiscal year 2013, we were giving $6,000. And then in fiscal year 14, 15, and 16, we budgeted the 6,500 normal dollars that we contribute, and then the 5,000 additional, all three of the previous fiscal years. So this has been going on for three years now, the additional money.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Alderman Jacob?
How long? How many years is this continuing? Or is there a certain number of years this is going on for?
The letter was... Well, this is just for this year. This is one motion for this year. Alderman... Do you have a follow-up before I go to Alderman Roy Wesley?
They've been giving reports every year to the city. What they have to do, the Historic Society has to do, when the barn came up, they turned in all their CDs to paint the barn. They came to it, then they didn't have any money. So we end up giving money to help pay for the barn. In return, they have to give a report every year to the city of... They have to continue to raise money on their own, too, trying to pay off, pay their CDs back. Now, we're to the point of the windows that need to be replaced into the house. Was there... Should it have came to the city council before? Probably yes, but there was a mistake, and the windows needed to be replaced. So Brad has been getting those reports yearly, correct? Okay, so let it show that he's shaking his head, yes. So do we see any problems with those reports, Brad?
Mr. Wilson.
And the reports that we've been receiving have been pretty standard for my duration here. They've kind of gone through the standard donation recently, the 6,500, and what they've used the money on. Obviously, it doesn't cover all of their expenses, but they do go through and list out which programs they use those monies on. And then the barn, you know, we received pretty comprehensive accounting of the replenishment of funds on the barn as well. So they're pretty close to square on the barn, and so they moved on to the next capital project.
You have a follow-up? Go ahead, Alderman.
Yes, I want to continue with this. The $6,500 is for the entertainment that they do throughout the year.
That's correct, for their activities and all their...
For their activities.
The fall festivals, those stories in the barn.
Which is the community event. So the funds for this comes out of hotel tax, correct?
Correct. Mr. Wilson.
Correct.
So it comes out of hotel tax. We can only use the hotel tax for tourism only, to promote tourism. So let's go to the barn, back to the barn here. It was supposed to be four years or five years?
It was, I think it was four years.
Whatever.
Well, it was 20,000, but they also earn money on their fundraisers and whatnot. And I think we did three years. Is that correct, Brad? So far, did we do all four? Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. We did three years, and each year we did check with them to make sure that they, you know, didn't have, you know, a banner year in fundraising, because we didn't want to necessarily over- contribute to it. So we did check with them on an ongoing basis. And this year, by way of the two letters that we received, they indicated that they were comfortable with the level of fundraising that they had done with the additional donation from the city to cover the barn, which is why they moved on to the next project.
And in return?
Good.
And in return, they're going to continue to do the reports on an annual basis?
Correct. Well, I would imagine so, right, Mr. Wilson? Okay.
Correct, yeah. We have a good relationship with them, so...
Any other questions? Alderman Sorrentino?
You know, Alderman Wesley mentioned that the funds come from the hotel tax.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, would this...
Go ahead.
How the dollars would play out, would this property be eligible, and would it be to our advantage to perhaps run it through the facade program? You mentioned it needs windows. Wouldn't that be considered?
Well, the windows were already put in. Unfortunately, like Alderman Wesley said, they did the windows before coming to the council. So the windows are done, I believe, correct? Right. Right, so that's a...
Yeah. Could I add into that?
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
The windows were already in, and we didn't even have a program actually set up at that time for the facade program. Probably would have been a good idea to put it in the facade program.
I misunderstood. I thought...
Go ahead.
I misunderstood. I thought they were looking to do the windows.
No, they're installed.
And I thought it could run through the facade program.
Done.
But it's going to be in the future, they're going to come to us prior to, like anybody else would?
Yes.
For now on, yes.
Good.
Any other questions? Alderman Jacob, you have another question on that?
Does the Park District help with this at all, or do they donate any money?
I believe not. It's a separate entity. Alderman Messina?
And so with the gala funds as well, does that go towards their CDs as well, I'm assuming? So we each get a distribution, all not-for-profits?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, the gala is, as we all know, a separate entity from the city.
Yeah.
And we have spoken to them about, you know, loosely about how they used their funds last year, but, you know, we didn't get a specific accounting for it since it's not our donation, the city's donation. So we really ask them to really reconcile what we give to them.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yep.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski? Oh, he's not here. Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
That passes. Next, Clean Air Counts name change. Do we need a motion for this, I think? It's just a recommendation to change the Clean Air Counts to Wooddale for a Greener tomorrow. So we don't need a motion for that. So that'll... The new name for Clean Air Counts will be Wooddale for a Greener tomorrow. Okay? We're good to go. Next, city manager's report. Mr. Murmish.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One item. You may have heard on the news or read in the paper about the governor's budget proposal speech earlier this week. Good news for Wooddale and all local governments. He did not propose any cuts to the local government distributive fund. And for Wooddale, that means $1.4 million in revenue that we count on for our annual budget, so that's really important. There's always talks down in Springfield about cutting back on that LGDF. So in his budget speech, at least he didn't mention that this year. So that's good. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Consent agenda. I have four items on the consent agenda. No objections. Do we have any objections? Otherwise, I don't entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Mayor Felice.
Yes. Next, I entertain a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, an ordinance annexing certain territory commonly known as a Salt Creek Golf Course Maintenance Shed Property to the city of Wooddale, DuPage, County, Illinois. Item number two, approval of final payment request to Schroeder Asphalt Services Incorporated for the Woodside Subdivision Street Resurfacing Project in an amount not to exceed $23,842.23. Item number three, a resolution accepting the fiscal year 2015 annual audit report from Sickich LLP. And item number four, an ordinance adopting Chapter Six, Article 17 of the city code to require public safety radio amplification systems in certain buildings. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Mayor Felice.
Yes, and that passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning. Alderman Catalano?
Yes, I have two, mayor.
Okay.
The Tempco resolution, we're going to table that to May 19th. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me, Sonny.
And then the ordinance, also the Tempco, we can also table that to May 19th. That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, that concludes your report.
Yes, mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Mayor, resolution, approval of closing of Irving Park Road, Illinois Route 19 for a modern day break. But may I ask a question on that?
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So should we not also then, since the route is changing, are we also post Addison Road now, too?
I believe that...
Or will that be a different...
Yes, we've already been in touch with them, and they said once the state passes, they'll follow in due course, we hope, with the approval to close Addison Road, so...
So we'll do another...
DuPage Department of Transportation, yeah.
That's it. I'm sorry, mayor. I understand it, but I wasn't sure if we had to do two of them. Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public Works Committee.
We have one item, mayor.
Go ahead.
A resolution seeking to approve a contract between the city of Wooddale and Baxter and Woodman for Murray Drive Design and Construction Management Project in the not-to-exceed amount of $26,850.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a question.
Question.
What was... Who was the other ones that submitted for this project, and what were their prices?
Yes, due to the expediting of this project into next fiscal year, we went and asked Baxter and Woodman for a proposal. We did not take it out to RFP. We just asked for a proposal from Baxter and Woodman to do a design and construction management.
So...
Go ahead.
My question to you, so if we expedite any projects, we're just going to not go out for RFPs? I'm just asking, is this going to be a new thing we're going to start?
Mr. Murmish.
I mean, I'm just asking.
Well, this was brought about by council direction to expedite this project. It wasn't originally anticipated to be in the budget, or else we would have went out for formal RFP, because the engineering would have been approved before the project construction. But because we skipped a fiscal year and just included everything in one year, if the council wanted to get it in, this was the only way to do it, unless you wanted to chance it and wait until the end of the season, so...
Go ahead. You have a follow-up?
I do have a follow-up. So my question is, so when we knew this, we moved this into the project, how long ago ahead of time did we know we moved this in?
Mr. Murmish.
On a follow-up, wait, I got another question.
Go ahead.
So you're trying to tell me we, as staff, could not get it out for RFP in time in a timely manner? Because, I mean, we have turned RFPs within four weeks.
Mr. Murmish.
We knew, what, I'd say, what, three weeks ago with CIP?
Yeah, just before I... Right.
Okay, three or four weeks ago, we knew. And typically, for an amount of $20,000, firms, I mean, that's a pretty low RFP amount for such work. We have a good relationship with Baxter. They submitted a really good price, so we went that route. If you would like, we could go back to the drawing board and do the RFP process.
Do you have a follow-up, Alderman Messina?
I do. Matt, how long have you guys been doing this, where you've gone out for design and construction management bidding, in general?
Mr. York.
For RFPs before I've been here, years, 20 years.
So we know what bad looks like, and we know what high looks like, and we know what a good price looks like.
Mr. York.
Yes.
How would you classify this one, even though we got it fast?
Mr. York.
I believe this is a pretty reasonable amount. Since it's just a road reconstruction, some curb work, and no water main, no sewer involved, it's a reasonable amount. So I would suggest that we go along with this one to expedite the project.
Do you have a follow-up? Otherwise, when we do go off for RFP, I believe, we get the paperwork ready, we give them 30 to 40 days? 40 days, then it comes to the RFP committee, then it comes to the committee. So it's almost six to eight weeks go by. And, well, do we want this project to finish late summer, or...
It was supposed to be done last year.
Early winter. We don't want to be paving in November. It didn't work out for us.
Can I add something?
Mr. Murmish.
I can't resist, but you're the first guy who complains when we do that. We're trying to save you.
The money you're spending.
All right, all right.
Are we changing?
No, no, we're not. We're not changing.
That's all I want to know.
We're not changing. This was added in there. It was added in there. That's why it was done.
We need to...
Do we have any further questions? We have a motion and a second, correct? Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
That passes.
That's the end of my report, mayor.
Thank you. Finance and administration. Alderman Jacob?
No report, mayor.
Thank you. Under other business, the airport noise report, anything?
Few updates on this. The FEAR did meet with the city of Chicago. They actually sat down with Rahm Emanuel. Rahm Emanuel basically said the diagonals are not going to stay open. The committee is looking into other community groups to possibly just talk, touch base with, and see what they're doing within the community. The only one that we've really found is Park Ridge. Representative Christine Winger, Tom Colleton, and others are in process of introducing some bills. House Bill 4076 is an environmental quality of life bill. HR 500 gives airlines incentives to obey the fly quiet. House Bill 4396 is a tax credit of soundproofing. So there's lots of bills out there by several different people. That'll be the end of my... Oh, finally, with the O'Hare Noise Group, we have decided, due to the lack of community involvement until the spring, we're going to do every other month. So the next meeting's going to be the second Monday of April.
Okay, and we'll have that on the website, so, right? Correct?
No, no.
Is that conclude?
That concludes my report.
Alderman Messina, you had something to add, or you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to add something. In the newspaper, there might be a glimmer of hope. They think the rotational's might actually come about possibly in May. So for the residents out there, fingers crossed, and keep an eye on the news.
Right, right now, it's a weekly rotation, but we're trying to push for a daily rotation, which we're waiting on a report from SOC.
Yeah, nighttime. It's a nighttime rotation, to be clear.
Right, right.
Not daytime, which is a whole other project.
Right. And next, Stormwater Commission. Alderman Jacob?
Okay, we did have our meeting yesterday, and there was a motion made by the Stormwater Committee, and I guess I'd like to have our city manager put it on an agenda item to look into. They did make a motion to have the city and council look into the February 2nd and 3rd rain event, which produced .87 inches of rain and caused the Salt Creek to rise high enough to trigger a reverse 911 call. And also, they want us to look into the damming of Oak Meadows, which they feel is a detriment to Wooddale. That's the end of my report.
Okay, I'll add something to that last storm. I did call the county after that rain event, because I'm like, what? We got a reverse 911 already? And some of the reasons they gave were, basically, the ground has been saturated because of the snow, and it's frozen, so the ground isn't taking any water. And because of the quick amount of rain, I think it was three-quarter inch or something, in less than an hour, or whatever it was, caused some of that. And they said they had issues all over the entire county. But again, the manager will follow up. Alderman Roy Wesley?
I was just going to say the same thing. The ground's frozen. It's not going to go into the ground. Of course, you're going to have it just running off. And what's it going to run off to? The lowest spot, the creek. And if you really want to look at Oak Meadows, that flooded. Of course it did. That's what it's supposed to be doing. And when the course is done, it was going to do more.
Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
Some of that did come up in the meeting, but they were not satisfied with some of that answer, so I'm just bringing it forward, which is what happened at the meeting yesterday.
Go ahead, follow-up.
In return, was there engineer there for the city of Wooddale answering those questions on behalf of the stormwater?
Mr. Phipps, I believe, was present last evening.
Did he respond to the rainfall at all, or did not?
Mr. Jacob, Alderman Jacob?
Yes, he did, and he had given some of the same things we're talking about. Like I said, the entire committee were not satisfied with that, and...
Okay.
They wanted... They made a motion, and I'm just letting you know what the motion was, and...
And also, we also reached out, I forgot to mention, forest preserve engineer. And they spoke to the county also about that project with the Oak Meadows and the damming, and they said, no, that's not causing any extra, because they still have the open. The damming was so they can do some work in one section. All right, nothing further on that. Approval of listed bills February 18th for $1,491,528. Alderman Jacob?
I make motion to approve the listed bills for February 18th, 2016, for $1,491,528.2. That is my motion.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Roy Wesley?
You're having a rough night first.
It's a little rough, yeah.
Matt?
Mr. York.
Mr. York.
Go ahead, what's the question?
I apologize.
While he's looking, while you're looking...
Regional truck equipment, plow blade, and 210, truck 210? What page is this?
Do you have the page, Mr. York?
Page 10. Don't we go through the trucks in the beginning of the year?
Go ahead, Mr. York.
Yes, the trucks are examined at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm taking that this is the blade of the plow for that price, I would imagine. If the blade is that far down and worn, wouldn't you think that that would be taken care of at the first of the year, since we didn't have a normal snowfall? Since we didn't have a normal snowfall, or is it normal procedure that you go through a blade a year on those trucks?
Mr. York, or is that a mechanic question?
Well, it's a mechanical question that I'd have to probably do some more research into, to see what the age of that blade was that's actually on there. I'm trying to look it up right now to see actually what was purchased as part of this. If you would just give me one second.
Sure, go ahead, no problem.
How about, how about if you just tell me after the meeting?
I can do that as well.
Okay, do you have any other questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Mayor, I have one question. M&amp;M lock.
Okay, M&amp;M lock.
For $267, 12 code keys, 30 copies of keys.
Chief.
Someone.
So we got probably a dozen different file cabinets from the bank that was purchased next door, and we got them keyed, but in order to get them keyed, they have to create a key. So they have the master codes, and then the key copies that they had to make for us, so.
Okay, I. Right, Mr. Bond is saying the cabinet, well, we didn't get the cabinets for free, we paid for the bank.
Well, on, on this, the reason why.
Go ahead, no, no.
It just seems like M&amp;M lock, we, every list of bills, there's been M&amp;M lock out here. Are we having that much problem with locks lately?
Chief.
I mean, every list of bills, there's M&amp;M locks or something.
Go ahead, chief.
Not necessarily. We do use the one in town when we can too, but there's frequently times that the lot, or the keys that we request can't be made there. And I know we use it for extra edition keys for vehicles that have the smart chip in them. Like when we buy a new vehicle, we have to, this is probably more of a garage question, but they keep the two original keys, and then they make copies, because if one of the originals gets lost, they can't make another copy down the road. So we do use M&amp;M lock quite a bit, but it's not for faulty service or things that, you know, that go, that go bad generally, so.
I'm not picking M&amp;M lock, I'm just saying, there seems, every list of bills, there's lock repairs on everything in this building or somewhere. I, I just can't believe how many locks we're going through.
Maybe we'll have the manager keep a list, or somebody, see how many blocks were changing, I'm not sure. I mean, I know the building's old, but, go ahead, Alderman Roy Wesley, you had a follow up on that?
Yeah. Greg, I take it that file cabinets, you telling me ANA lock couldn't make keys for file cabinets?
Chief.
I, I'm not sure, but this is where they came out and they redid the keyholes and whatever, and I believe it was while they were out doing some other work, 'cause they, there was a problem with one of the electronic door latches that they do for us, so.
And.
We do.
And ANA lock things. And I'm gonna tell you the same thing I tell Mr. York and anyone else that works for the city of Wooddale. Keep it in town if you can, give them first option, and if there isn't, then the second option is DuPage County, and after that, then we go from there.
Sure.
So, I mean, even though they're out to repair one door, we could've gave business to a town, a business in town. Can't give the business to a person, because they're here to fix one door. When we have other companies.
Alderman Jacob, you're next.
I had a couple of questions. First one, check sequence number three, budget book tabs for $566.40. I mean, is this how much we spend on putting tabs in our books, in the budget book?
Mr. Wilson.
Seems a little high.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe some of you got your books already, but a few of you have the books on the dais tonight, so as you can see, there's, I want 34 tabs in those, and we got 25 sets of them. One of the things that we're actually gonna bring up, the budget meeting, is if we actually need 34 tabs in the binder next year, if we can go down to eight. So that's one of the things we're gonna reevaluate for next year, but, yeah, you know, I mean, it's 25 sets of.
You have a follow up?
All those tabs.
Go ahead.
And we've been doing that for, since before I was there, actually, we've actually gone with significantly cheaper versions of those tabs over the past few years, 'cause before, they were different colors and Mylars and things like that, and this is actually a significantly cheaper tab in the past.
Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
And did we look into, I mean, do we get quotes on that? I mean, that just seems like a lot of money for some tabs.
Mr. Wilson.
We did not.
Okay.
Go ahead, follow up.
Yes, sequence number 24, it's Outgrow Mechanical. One says HVAC maintenance city buildings, $294.50. And then the line under it says maintenance of HAV systems for $294.50.
Mr. York, that's, you're taking that when I look?
Those are monthly service charges?
What's the difference in the two? It, I mean, it sounds like.
Unless it's for different buildings, I can pull it up real quick.
I mean, there's three different units that were serviced, probably.
Yeah, the first one is for the Public Works Building at $294. The second one was for the Public Works, one that was for a February charge, and the one before that was for the January charge, both for the Public Works Building at 7:20. And then the last one was, uh, was for some, I think the work, when they came out, when my, my furnace would not start. And it was 50 degrees in my office.
Alderman Jacob, go ahead, follow up.
Like I said, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a duplication for that one.
Nope, no duplication.
And I do have one more.
Go ahead.
63, it was, this was for the, let's see here, the testing of algae on the three roofs, which we all wanted to do, but that was done a long time ago. Did, why are we just paying for it now?
I take it the bill just came through. Mr. Cage, is that correct? Yeah, that's what I figured.
Okay, 'cause we did that like three, four months ago.
That was, right.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Messina?
A few questions. First one was check number 34, Home Depot. Mailbox replacement.
Oh, Mr. York, oh, that's from the.
Did we hit anything, or what happened?
Mr. York.
During snowfalls, when we have heavy snowfalls, we don't actually hit them with our plows, but we hit them with the snow. And if the mailbox is a bad mailbox, sometimes that mailbox goes flying away, and we have to go pick it up and put a new post in and help the resident out, so.
Okay, that's on us, right?
We, we take care of it.
We do, what is it, like $100 or something?
Yeah, I mean, this is for $368, and it was probably, I'd have to go back and look at the bill, but it was for multiple posts and mailboxes.
Right.
We usually.
Cost of doing business.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it is. I mean, we could go out there and say that theirs was substandard, or it wasn't in the right location, but, you know, we try to be good to our residents.
Appreciate that, thanks.
Do you have a follow up? Go ahead.
Yeah, a couple more, not for him. 45 and 50, Lenz, Lenz and McMaster. And this might go back to Brad. Brad, do you know when we're gonna have that spend report for council, for the rest of council of the sea? I mean, I, I look at, I cringe when I look at 45, and I see they went and made a stop for a roll of mounting tape. This is like the prime example of why I said the consolidation was important.
I'll take that, I'll take that. It's kind of as a public works thing. We are, have been, and are doing different types of purchasing. We are doing consolidation. There are certain times when you can't wait to get an extra day to get something done, or something will stop, the project will stop. So there are times when we need to go and buy things, and we will still do that. There are times when we order things from Granger that doesn't come until the next day, and we know that, and we try to look ahead, and we've been doing that. But there's still gonna be times that we're never gonna get away from the fact that there's not gonna be a Miller, there's not gonna be a Lenz, there's not gonna be a Maher, there's not gonna be a Wernamont on there, because we can plan as much as we want, but if there's a project that's going on, and we need to go get a part to fix a water main break, or to fix something that's happening at.
I would hope the mounting tape was not for the water main break, though.
No, I'm, I'm just saying.
I mean, it's mounting tape, it's critically critical. That's all I'm saying, it's critical.
But yes, we are, we are, we have been working on the consolidation. I've been working with Mr. Wilson. We've been informing our, our employees of the, how we're changing our mindset, so we will see some of these leak through.
Mr. Wilson, you have a comment before I go back to Alderman Messina? Go ahead.
Just gonna respond to the first part of his question. Yeah, we've gotten a revised list earlier this week from our reps, as I got back from their annual.
Trip, yeah.
Trip, yeah. So we're kinda just working our way through that. It sorted an additional time. I mean, the one that we looked at a couple weeks ago is still fundamentally what it looks like, it's just how many times you wanna carve it out.
Yeah.
Do you have a follow up, Alderman Messina? Go ahead.
And I got one last question. So, yeah, kudos, please. By all means, thank you, and Matt, thanks for making that. It's a big culture shift. I've seen it in many, many municipalities, so thank you to you and your crew. Thank you. You guys will have it, we'll have headers. It's, it's like a menu. It takes a lot of work and headers, so that they legitimately know, if it's this item, it has to be this specific part number, this specific price. It leaves no room for error. So I can get a pack of batteries, I need to know exactly what that part number is, 'cause if I get the other pack of batteries, that's not what's been bid out. Does that, do you have a question?
No, I heard you say a lot of headers, does that mean more tabs?
No. In the spreadsheet, in the spreadsheet.
Just, go ahead, I didn't mean that, I'm just kidding.
Do you have a question on that one?
Yeah. You have a follow up on that, Alderman Catalano? On what he's talking about?
Right, what I wanna know is, are we using different vendors, or are we just gonna use one vendor?
I, I think the goal is, you've got a main vendor, but you should always have two other vendors that you can.
Oh, we all agree on that, yeah.
Price check. Shouldn't be one guy, because I guarantee you the price is gonna go up real quick after that first deal.
At least we have some competition.
Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Correct, I'll take the office supply example. You know, we consolidated with a company here in town about a year, year and a half ago. Couple weeks ago, one of the operating departments, you know, reached out and said, hey, you know what, they're gonna charge us price X, I can get it from, you know, one of the big box for half the price, and it was, you know, three, four digit difference, and so at that point, it made sense to, to go with the big box, you know, just on volume, they could give us a better price. And so currently, yeah, the, the menu that Alderman Messina referenced is with Granger, but you know, there are, you know, the ones where we have to drop in, and then we're also, you know, a couple of the vendors that we've informed that we're not gonna be using them as much in the near future, have already reached out and conveniently had some better options for us, so.
So that, that's.
Right, yeah, follow up, Alderman Messina.
I mean, having been in the business for as long as I have been, I can tell you that's all I wanted, so anybody out there that thinks this is one supplier, I'm after, I'm trying to help, I'm not. This is for the good of your tax dollars, and I think we'll have bottom line dollars to show you, but we welcome every other vendor, MRO vendor, that wants to bid to please come and talk about it, but that was the conversation, and it's already stirring a good conversation for next year. So Granger knows, it's not their business, it's up for bid.
Uh, Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, just to follow up with that, we've already set a tentative meeting with them a couple months out to reevaluate the program and see, you know, where we're finding gaps or, you know, issues, and continue to make it the best program that we can, so.
Cool, kudos. Last question was.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, last question was around the taser training. I know there's some vendors that offer free training, is it because that's the manufacturer we buy our tasers from?
Chief.
Yeah, we get our, we do train the trainer trainings. So we have three instructors, so we don't have to pay for each officer to get trained, you know, as much, so we, we pay for three instructors, I think it's 250 an instructor. And then there's some per certificate courses, but it's a lot cheaper to do the house-in training, and taser for us to get certified every year, and also as part of our accreditation, we have to go through them to get the certification to carry their weapons and train on their weapons, so.
Great.
We just went through all that training, so.
Follow up?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Alderman Roy Wesley, you had a question also?
Randy Messina, I congratulate you for being in business as long as you have been, but you're the youngest one up here too, so. Brad, Thornton, Thornton, we have a paying payout of $30,047.35. The incentive, how many more payments do we have on that?
Mr. Wilson, do you know, or?
And.
Probably not.
I got a couple. Do we have any other companies that have the incentives like that in town? I think it's important that the council, I, I don't know if the council actually knows if there's.
We used to have two other words.
How many companies are out there incentives, and how much incentives there are.
Mr. Mermis.
Yeah, typically, I think on an annual basis, somebody in the council asks that question, and then we submit a report in the packet, so it seems to be about that time that we do a little refresher on the sales tax agreements.
Well.
Like how much is left in that current one, we have to go back and look at that agreement.
Go ahead.
I think Brad wants to talk.
Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
Yeah, to the manager's point, you have to go back and look, and the actual number's slightly unclear, because there's two different qualifiers, there's a time limit on it, or a monetary limit. It's whichever one they hit first, so we'll have to go through and run the numbers and see where they're at on both of those. They've been coming in pretty close to their, their estimates, though, which has been a good thing. To your second question, the easier one is how many other companies right now do we currently have an arrangement like this with? The answer is none. They're the only ones in town that have an active agreement like that. In the past, there were three that were going, and then there was another one that was approved, but the company never came into town. So currently, there's only one active one, and that's the Thorntons.
And you.
Go ahead, follow up.
You wouldn't know how long that incentive's gonna carry it out, well.
You have to check it out, he said.
It doesn't matter, the manager authorized to give us a report on it, so. And I'd like to know, in that report, is it possible that you could put the dollar amount of the incentives that we already paid out on that?
Yeah, it'll be a fine report.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? We have, we do have a motion in a second, correct?
Right.
All right, need a roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
And that passes. We have no executive session, no items to be referred, I need a motion to adjourn.
Remove.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, or adjourned?